One nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda?
I move adoption of the consent agenda.
Any public comment on the consent agenda?
Is that last agenda?
No, it's just on the counselor agenda, the items that are under there on the consent Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The next item is public comments at this time. If there is anybody that would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda tonight, this is your opportunity. Is there any public comments?
I want to speak about something that's on the agenda.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll get to that a little bit later then. Thank you. Yes, sir, if you'd like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda, just come right up to the microphone and make sure the green light's on for the mic so everybody can hear you.
I wanted to know whether there's has been any action taken or there will be on the extension of bus service.
I don't know if there's been any action about any extension. I know it's going to be discussed again during the budget hearings.
Oh, it is.
And that'll be discussed at that point.
Thank you.
Okay.
That will include, it's on the agenda, I believe, from next Monday's Services Committee meeting.
Sir, if you could just, if you could please provide your name and address for the record?
Clyde McDonald, 310 Main Road North.
So, as Counselor Marble said, the budget work session on the bus is scheduled for a week from tonight, May 8th. It'll be a discussion item on the 6 o'clock Services Committee. It'll also be part of the budget working session that begins at 7:00 next Monday.
Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. Item D, policy agenda, news presentations, awards, we have none. The next item on the agenda tonight is public hearings. The first item under public hearings is proposed zoning ordinance amendments to Article 1, General Administration, related to the conflict with other ordinances and the processes for amending the zoning ordinance. Basically, this amendment eliminates outdated language, which is no longer needed, reorganizes the provisions to clarify the process to amend zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we schedule for public hearing, the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to Article 1.
It's already at public hearing.
Oh, I apologize. I withdraw that poorly stated motion.
We need a motion to accept it, and then we'll have public comment.
I make a motion that we accept the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to Article 1, General Administration, relating to the conflict of other ordinances and the process of amending the zoning ordinance.
Second. Any public comments? Seeing none. Discussion? All those, Council McAvoy?
I just have a question, and I guess I'd need to go back to, am I understanding that the planning board can initiate a zoning change without the participation of the town council?
The planning board can initiate under state law, but it cannot be enacted without a public hearing and vote of this council.
Okay.
As well as the required public hearing of the planning board.
Okay, thank you.
Would town planner give a little overview of this?
Sure. Karen Cullen, Town Planner, for the record. This is, as you had indicated, basically, well, it includes housekeeping changes to remove redundant or conflicting language and changes to the amendment process language to clarify how the zoning ordinance is amended. Text amendments are initiated by town council, the planning board, or by written petition, which requires 100 registered voters to sign it. The current language calls for 10% of the registered voters of the town, which is over 500, at a point which we believe is too high a bar for this. MAP amendments can be initiated by the town, town council, the planning board, or by written application from a property owner. The amendments also cover public hearing requirements, including the legal advertisement and posting, and the planning board recommendation to town council timeframe is being amended so that it would be within 14 days of the completion of the planning board's required public hearing and/or within 90 days of referral from town council when it is so referred. And finally, clarification of adoption requirements and an effective date.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Have a motion and a second? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. The next item under public hearings is the proposed zoning ordinance amendments to sections 3.7.4, 3.7.6, and 7.2, and add in a new section of 4.25 to Article 4, all related to accessory apartments. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the proposed zoning ordinance amendment for section 3.7.4, 3.7.6, and 7.2, and adding a new section, additional section, of 4.25 to Article 4, all relating to accessory apartments.
Second.
Yeah, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get to you.
You're not voting on it, are you?
Well, no, I'm not voting until you get a chance to speak.
I don't know your process.
Okay. At this time, if we could have the planner come up again and go over the item two?
All right. Currently, an accessory dwelling unit, which is also known as, commonly known as a mother-in-law apartment, is treated the same as a two-family dwelling in the zoning ordinance. In all but the residential aid district, they are not limited in size or exterior appearance, which means that they're basically a two-family dwelling unit. In the residential aid district, they are allowed only as conversions of existing single-family units. They must be subordinate to the main unit at no more than 50% of the square footage of the main unit, but at least 500 square feet, and they must avoid the appearance of a two-family building. This proposal is to eliminate the language in the residential aid district, which deals with single-family conversions, and to add new language on accessory apartments that would be applicable to all zoning districts. Districts that currently allow two-family dwellings will still allow two-family dwellings, i.e., your typical duplex building. The main points in the proposal are that they would, accessory apartments would be allowed by conditional use permit issued by the planning board, one accessory apartment per single-family dwelling. The owner of the residence must occupy one of the units, which can be either the main unit or the accessory unit. The accessory apartment must be subordinate and exterior, the exterior must retain the appearance of a single-family home. The maximum size is 40% of the living area of the entire structure, with a maximum of 800 square feet. The planning board may allow deviation to accommodate designs that are for handicapped individuals, and there must be a minimum of one parking space dedicated to the accessory apartment. The purpose of this amendment is to provide units for relatives needing some care and companionship, provide units for caregivers or companions to allow elderly residents to stay in their homes instead of being forced to move elsewhere, add rental units to the overall housing stock to meet the needs of small households, for instance, young professionals, single older adults, single elderly folks, and finally, to protect the stability, property values, and residential character of the neighborhood while allowing these types of units to be built. Code enforcement has suggested several modifications to the language which was before the planning board for their public hearing. The changes would allow accessory apartments in detached accessory structures, for instance, garages, in addition to within the main, single-family home. The planning board was concerned about allowing this, at least in the residential aid district, where the purpose of the district is for the development, I quote the zoning here, the development of low-density, single-family housing types. Allowing accessory apartments in detached accessory structures, such as garages or carriage houses, is common in these types of regulations, and in my experience, doing so has not created problems. Code enforcement officer Miles Block has indicated in his memo, which is in your packet, that he has received requests for secondary units in detached buildings, and he does not foresee any problems in doing so. I'll offer the council three different options. One is to, on this particular amendment, one is to close the public hearing and act upon the proposed amendments. The second is to continue the public hearing to a date certain to allow staff and the planning board time to consider testimony given tonight. And the third is to close the public hearing and refer the amendments back to the planning board for further consideration, which means that you'd either be paying for another ad or lumping this one in with another zoning amendment. And I can, you know, go into more detail if you need it.
Thank you. Now, at this time, we'll take some public comment.
I really didn't know your.
So, it's okay.
This is good job.
Just give your name and address.
I'm Allison Barabee, 217 Main Road North, Hamden. I passed out to all the council members a couple of little handouts that refer to what I'm going to speak to, and there are some extra copies on the side. I'll try to be as quick as possible, but my name's Allison Barabee. I'd like to discuss tonight's proposal to change the zoning ordinance in the town of Hamden. I grew up in Hamden. After becoming a physical therapist out of state, my husband and I were lucky enough to move back to Hamden and raise two children. I recently stopped by the town office and spoke with your planning director in order to find out whether our current, single-family residents could be converted into a two-family unit. At that time, I was told of the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance, which would essentially eliminate the current zoning, and I may be wrong on parts of this, so please speak up if I am, which allows conversion of an existing home into a two-family unit. And if I'm correct, the proposed change not only affects residential aid zoning, but the entire town of Hamden regardless of the zone. I also became aware of the very restrictive proposals, which include that all two-family conversions would be eliminated in favor, conversions of existing one-family homes into two, in favor of what is called an accessory apartment. These accessory apartments would only allow apartments up to 800 square feet and only allow one bedroom. I was given a copy of the proposed changes, and I was struck by section 4.25.1, which is the purposes of why these changes are proposed. The proposed, the proposal of an accessory apartment section is to, first, allow families to help the homeowner to be able to stay in their home. As a physical therapist, I'm in favor of aging in place. I have also, I also have firsthand knowledge of what it really takes to help a person age in place and be allowed to die in the comfort of their own home. I, along with over eight family members and two paid employees, helped both my mother and my father stay in their home until the day they died. In my father's case, this meant that we provided 24/7, around-the-clock care for over a year. No one person can do all of this. All that it takes to help a terminally ill person stay in their home. My parents' home was large enough for us to literally rotate in and out of this house week after week. It was large enough so that loved ones could come and say goodbye. It was large enough for my parents to have their grandchildren spend time with them. I am here tonight because having the ability to retrofit or convert a home can literally mean the difference between a terminally ill person being able to stay in their home or having to go to a nursing home or hospital to die. The second purpose of this change, proposed zoning change, was to provide a source of income, companionship, security, and service, services in order for them to remain in their home or their neighborhood. Again, a very necessary goal, as the state of Maine is the old, is the most aged state in the country. In fact, I was told that one of Hamden's planning slash zoning board members had to resign from her position because she had to move out of state to take care of her own aging father. Many older folks or people with handicaps need support, but they don't require a person to live within their own personal living space. Having the option of a second family unit allows for this stated purpose. The third purported purpose of this zoning change is to provide much-needed rental stock to meet the needs of smaller households, both young and old. It is this purpose that I feel the new ordinance does not address and, in fact, directly restricts. By erasing the current zoning, which allows for two family units in favor of only new accessory apartments, limited to 800 square feet and one bedroom, this zoning is, in fact, discriminating against a protected class according to the Fair Housing Act, based on familial status. Specifically, by restricting all apartments to one bedroom, you are, in fact, restricting families with children from obtaining a rental apartment in Hamden. Also, by restricting the apartment to no more than 800 square feet, instead of only restricting it to less than 40% of the residence's square footage, thus making it a subordinate apartment, it is effectively discriminating, again, against families with children. I'd like to share my family's personal experience. After spending three years away in Portland to attend Maine Law, my daughter, who grew up in Hamden, and her husband moved back to her hometown of Hamden. She is an attorney, he is a professional. They currently rent a two-bedroom apartment in Hamden. In the past year, they've added one child to their family and are expecting their second. So now, they are looking for a home in Hamden so that they can stay where she grew up. My husband provides childcare for our first grandchild, and we'll provide it for the second. My husband's been retired for 15 years, and we hope to downsize and perhaps even live in a two-family home with our children and grandchildren. This proposed zoning change would mean that we could not live within Hamden, and we hope, and hope to have a reasonably sized apartment for me and my husband, while helping our children buy a home in Hamden. As a young professional couple with two children, a rental apartment would help them to own a home and live in Hamden. There are many young families who would benefit from having a two-family home that allows for the owner occupancy as well as an income from a second unit. Another example is my niece, who spent some of her young years here in Hamden. She's in her 30s, single, no children, a human resources director. She recently purchased a two-unit home in Hamden so that she could, again, put down roots while having the income from the second unit to pay for the mortgage. The fourth purported change, purported purpose of this zoning change is to protect the character of a neighborhood, protect stability, and maintain property values by requiring owner occupancy. This seems like a reasonable purpose. But my question is, what is the character of Hamden? As someone who grew up in Hamden, went to Hamden schools, moved away, moved back, raised my family, headed the Veterans Monument Committee, founded the Flag Project, was the Hamden Kiwanis Citizen of the Year, I worry that a few people may consider the, that only a few people may consider the character of Hamden. Basically, that a few people are gonna decide what the character of Hamden is. Is the character of Hamden that we do not want families who have children to live in Hamden unless they can afford to buy a single-family home? Is the character of Hamden to be that older lifelong citizens will be forced out? This proposed zoning is wrong, narrow-minded, short-sighted, based on fear and discrimination, and should not be passed. So to summarize the parts of the zoning change, I oppose. It is, first, the elimination of the right to convert a single-family home into a two-family home, as it stands now, in favor of the very restrictive accessory apartment option. I suggest that the 800-square-foot restriction on size be changed to not to exceed 40% of the square footage of the main house, and to eliminate the restriction of only one bedroom. At the very least, this proposed ordinance change should be tabled and sent back to the planning board for further consideration, and an effort should be made to more widely advertise these changes to the current residents of the town. This changing in zoning does affect all current, single-family property owners in the town, and yet, nobody knows about it. I would also like my testimony here tonight to be entered into the, into the full minutes of the meeting. Are there any questions? And maybe I was wrong in my understanding of it, but...
I think, I think you are a little bit misinformed on the intent of this. This is actually to provide and allow homeowners to add an accessory apartment to their existing single-family home in order to help take care of the aging population. This is no way restricting the size of other apartment buildings or two-family homes or any of that.
I was told that, basically, what is in the, I was given the current zoning, and then it was stricken out with the new zoning written below, and basically, they're, they're striking out the division of a single-family home into a two-unit and creating only accessory apartments. If you want to have a two-unit apartment building, new construction, that has not been eliminated. But an existing home changed into a two-unit, two-family unit, is gonna be restricted to one bedroom at 800 square feet. My parents' home was over 4,000 square feet. We could not have survived with only one bedroom with the people that needed to come in and out.
I'll ask the town planner to address some of these questions you've raised.
That's a good idea. She can probably address it a lot better than I can.
Thank you. First of all, point of clarification, the elimination of the language regarding conversion of a single-family to a two-family only applies to the residential aid district. In all other districts that currently allow two-family units, two-family units will still be allowed, and they can be any size, any shape, any color, whatever. In regards to the, the character of the neighborhood, that's common language that the planning board or the Board of Appeals has to deal with in terms of uses that are, in the case of the planning board, by, allowed by conditional use. They need to ensure that, whatever it is, whether it's an accessory apartment or some other type of use that's allowed by conditional use, they're looking at the character of the neighborhood, and that's generally speaking, the area that it is in, not the entire town of Hamden. So, the planning board is commonly looking at that as a qualification when they're making these types of decisions. These are done by conditional use permit, so it's not, you know, the planning board has the authority to approve or disapprove these. Any other questions? I don't know whether I made it clear enough.
Counsel Marvel?
Just, just to be certain, I'd reiterate, it was our intention collectively to offer an option that didn't previously exist, and to do so in a way that was fair to the entire Your concerns were in this room before it ever got to this point, is, I guess, what I'm trying to say. And I don't think we have done, or certainly didn't intend to do, what you're concerned about and have pointed out. So, my, my single question is, have we intentionally or otherwise taken away the ability of somebody in a residential district to, that they now have the right to convert a single-family home into a duplex?
Only in the residential aid district, and that's only in relation to, I mean, in the residential aid district today, you're allowed to convert an existing, single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling, but that two-family dwelling has to meet certain criteria. One of those is it has to be a minimum of 500 square feet and no more than 50% of the living area of the existing, single-family home. It's very similar to, not identical to, but it's very similar to the language that is in the accessory apartment requirements that we've drafted.
And isn't it of common occurrence that consideration of expanding a single-family home in the residential district frequently runs into issues of sideline, driveway, parking, those kinds of real-world restrictions that, that make that eventuality in the residential aid district hard to achieve?
Yes, yeah. I mean, one of the, one of the characteristics of the residential aid district as a whole is that it's got relatively small lot sizes, and, you know, the houses, generally speaking, were, you know, they're, they're spaced out in such a way that, in some cases, there's just not a lot of room left on the lot without getting into issues of setback encroachments and whatnot.
Thank you.
Yeah, you got another?
Anything else?
Sure. Come on up front again, and we want everybody to be able to see. It's okay.
Not very quiet, so you can hear me from over there. I lived in, on the Main Road North, and we had a two-acre lot. I have a, I had a 10-acre lot and subdivided it down to five acres, so, and I've been looking at properties that have over two acres. So there are exceptions all over this town where the houses are not right on top of each other. So, by eliminating the 800-foot, 800-square-foot restriction, you, and just limiting it to 40% of the total house, you've dealt with that. And in my case, I'm not, I'm not a new-construction-type person. I'm talking about using the same footprint you have, just dividing it up differently. So, you know, you can write your ordinances, but in my, the way I read it, and then I thought about it and came back and talked to her and annoyed her a little bit more the next day, or a couple days later, I'm like, am I hearing this right? You're only allowing one-bedroom apartments. That is not, that wouldn't have worked for my daughter and her husband, and they would have had to move out because they had a baby. Now, the second one's on the way. You know, so, it's very short-sighted. I understand some people's fears about apartments, but also people who understand the cost of construction, limiting it to 800 square feet, it's just as expensive to go ahead and do 1,200 square feet as it is to put in services for an 800-square-foot apartment. And knowing what it takes to care for someone, one person cannot do it all. So, if you really want older people to be able to stay in their homes, it's not one person who takes care of them through the end of their life. So, just by eliminating the 800-square-foot, just say no, no more than 40%, and eliminating the restriction of one bedroom, then you've, you've solved my problems, but I think it warrants letting people in the town know, or keep it separate. Do not, I live in residential aid. I want to, when I bought here, as I've lived here, I've often thought of, if I needed to, I could move in a small part of my house, and my kids could move in the big part and take care of me, or my husband. So, this change restricts our options, and we have over 2,500 square feet in our house.
So you have two concerns, the number of bedroom restriction and the actual square footage.
Square footage.
So if we eliminated the bedroom restriction and said no more than 40%, then all your concerns would be alleviated?
Yes, but I think you should maybe take another week to, week or a couple weeks to consider, is that the only concern that could pop up for people? And I think, I was talking with a friend of mine who built on, in addition to her house, that basically doubled her house so that she could move her mother in, and she wasn't aware that this was being passed. I mean, getting the word out to current residential aid owners that their, their zoning is being changed is important, I think.
Well, I think we've posted it. Well, I think we've posted it the same as we do for every other zoning change or amendment or anything we do all over town. Obviously, if people are going to be involved and want to know, they're going to have to pay attention to the town's website, and it's all there. Obviously, I don't think we can go door-to-door and tell everybody every time we're going to make a change.
But I think it was Mr. Marvel who asked if it was being more restrictive to those in residential A, and yes, it is. You know, requiring only accessory apartments as opposed to allowing it to change from a one-family to a two-family unit is more restrictive in residential A.
I guess I'm under the impression that in residential A, you couldn't have two units to begin with.
As long as it's five hundred square feet and no more than fifty percent of your square footage, your house, that's the current zoning.
So, why can't you still do that?
If you have a thirty-five hundred square-foot house, you can only build eight hundred square feet right now.
That's with an accessory apartment, but you can still do a two-unit, right?
No. No, you're eliminating that for residential A.
We had discussions at the planning board on that particular question, and the planning board felt that the residential aid district is primarily to be single-family residential, and they did not want to allow two-family residences. They felt that eliminating that language and going just to accessory apartments in the residential aid district was what they felt was the...more in line with the intent of the residential aid district.
Dave, quick question. What percentage is residential A of the total residential footprint? I know. What'd you estimate?
Well, population-wise, it's probably between forty and fifty percent, is my guess. Geographically, probably about ten, five.
Angus, this was posted in the paper, correct? Benward?
It was. It was also...I don't know if people read every word, but in the fall newsletter that listed out all of the policy issues, that covers literally everything on the last six months' agendas, the next six months' agendas in terms of policy issues. And that's up on the website, the Busy Town article, it did talk about the accessory apartment. I wouldn't say that's...I mean, we do the best we can to get the word out, and I would echo what the counselor said, that the intent here was to actually expand and to provide new opportunities, but I think, you know, we hear your comments that, in certain instances, that may not be the effect.
Any other public comment? Any further discussion? We've got a motion and a second to accept it the way it is. All in favor? All opposed? So, I would recommend that we come back in two weeks and revisit this topic.
I agree. I'd only bring up from the guy who confused a motion to refer to public hearing from the public hearing that we say we're closing this public hearing and continuing it...no, we keep it open, don't you? I'm showing my ignorance again. This is great. To just keep it open and continue the discussion in two weeks, is that what you're suggesting?
Correct.
Now that I'm understanding it, I agree.
Even though we're not passing this tonight, I think it's a win because it's showing that the council is actually listening to the public. So, thank you very much for spending the time or taking the time to come here tonight and pointing out your concerns. Hopefully, from what you've just seen, that you see that the council does listen to our residents. So, we'll revisit this over the next couple of weeks, and we'll iron out those final details, and you're more than welcome to come and any of your other citizens of Hamden that have concerns about this, because we value every bit of input that we can get.
So, it's not being sent back?
It's being sent back, but it's not approved tonight.
And it's not being sent back to the zoning committee, it's just to be brought up again in two weeks?
I need clarification on that point. Is what exactly is the council's intent? Do you want staff to take a look at this again? Do you want the planning board to take a look at this again? Or do you want to simply mull it over in your own minds for the next two weeks and just pick up where you left off?
My personal opinion on this is if we have public condensation about this with problems, and we also have Miles coming in with some things to the council that he would like to see changed on this, is that we take and send this back to the planning board, that both of those can take a look at that, and the planning board can come back to us with a new recommendation or the same recommendation, whatever they desire, and then we can go from there.
Okay, so the planning board meets next on May 10th, so I believe that that will...
I'm just saying that. It's up to the council, whether they feel this way or not.
It's still going to come back to the council on May 15th, no matter which direction we go with this, if it goes to P and D, and then if it goes to the planning board. But can I have a motion to keep this proposed zoning ordinance, public hearing, open until May 15th?
I make a motion that we keep this proposal for zoning ordinance amendment, section 374, 376, 72, with a new section of 425, open.
Second.
Come back to the council on May 15th.
To come back to the council on May 15th.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. So, we haven't given up. We'll go back and try to work all the bugs out so everybody's happy. Thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight for a public hearing is the proposed zoning ordinance amendments to section 4.7 for off-street parking, drive-through design, and buffer yard requirements in section 4.8. Town planner could give us a little briefing on that, please.
Yep. Currently, there is no way for the town to grant any relief to the requirements for off-street parking, loading, drive-through, design, buffer yards, or signage requirements that are in the zoning ordinance. The proposed amendments allow the permit granting authority, which is usually going to be the planning board under site plan review, but occasionally, the code enforcement officer will be the permit granting authority to grant waivers to the requirements upon request. The proposed amendment also allows for non-paved parking in certain situations, shared parking within a single development, much like a shopping center where people park once and shop at multiple stores. This would be allowed in the Village Commercial and Village Commercial two districts, and shared parking between developments, which is also in the Village Commercial and Village Commercial two districts. That's basically the town center. Short and sweet, and that's pretty much it.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the zoning ordinance amendment to section 4.7, off-street parking, drive-through design, and buffer yard requirements in section 4.8.
Second.
Okay, do we have any public comments? Seeing none? Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. So, the next item is nominations, appointments, and elections. Item 3A is a referral from Planning and Development. Counselor McBike?
At the last Planning and Development Committee meeting, we had the appointment of Bernie Kubitz to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and it was vetted through that committee. And at this time, I would like to make the motion, do we accept Bernard Kubitz for the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. There's no old business tonight. Item five under new business is a presentation and overview of the FY 2016 audit. James Wadman, CPA, if you could come now, please. Push that button to make sure that green light's on, please.
Green light is on. So, I have a brief presentation for you. Try to keep it within ninety minutes or so. Actually, I'll try to stay within kind of the highlights of the highlights I went over with you folks earlier. And if it seems okay, what I thought I might do basically is just talk about results of operations for this past fiscal year, kind of focusing on roughly five pages of the audited financial statements, which are approximately sixty pages long.
Actually, if I might, for those watching from home, the FY 16 audit that Mr. Wadman is referring to, you can find online at hamdenmain.gov/budget, and it's the top link on that page.
And what I'm basically going to focus on are pages forty-two through forty-six of the audited financial statements. And what we have here is some budget versus actual reporting on revenues for this past year, expenses, and your unassigned fund balance or your surplus for the year. The town ended this fiscal year with an unassigned fund balance of one million fifteen thousand eighty-two dollars, or your surplus for the year. That was an increase of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars. And that is basically a result of three components. You had a revenue surplus for this past year, which is detailed on pages forty-two and forty-three. The results of your revenue activity for this past year was a favorable budget variance, in other words, revenues in excess of budget of two hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars. On the expenditure side, you operated four hundred and twenty-two thousand forty-four dollars below budget. So, that is a combined favorable budget variance for the town for this past fiscal year of seven hundred and three thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars. Now, in putting your budget together for the year ended June 30th, 2016, you used three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of your surplus to reduce your tax commitment for the year. So, that subtracted from your seven hundred and three thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars resulted in a favorable increase in your surplus for the year of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand six seventeen, again, ending at that million fifteen thousand eighty-two dollars. Aside from that, very, very strong year for you financially. Enjoy doing your audit. We had no management letter comments for this past fiscal year, no written internal control weaknesses, anything to that effect. And that's all I have for you. If you have any other questions, I know we talked about in more detail earlier a number of various items, but try to keep it brief.
Does anybody have a question? Marvel?
Just a simple comment, that as both a resident of this community and a counselor, it's reinforcing feeling of security to know that we've hired a good town manager who works with capable staff, and then you get that sense verified by an independent audit. It's a very comfortable position to be in, as opposed to my lack of understanding of certain parliamentary procedures and zoning issues. So, thanks for the good news.
You bet. It's a pleasure, and feel free to contact us should you have any questions.
One point of clarification that I think would be helpful to make clear for the public. So, as you know, the sewer fund has run a deficit for a number of years and has paid its bills by virtue of borrowing from the general fund through so-called inter-fund transfers. So, when people hear a million-dollar fund balance, I just want people to understand that there's not a million dollars sitting in the bank that we can just go work with, that some significant share of that is actually funds that are due to the general fund from the sewer, that that is part of the assets that shows up on our balance sheet. So, until the sewer fund actually pays back the general fund in full, that's not actually... that money's not actually in the bank. It is an asset because it's owed to us, but if you could just clarify that point.
Well, that's true. Your assets consist not only of cash and investments, but you have approximately six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars owed to your general fund from your wastewater fund. You also have other receivables from other governments. You have receivables in the form of property taxes and tax liens. So, this surplus of a million fifteen thousand dollars is not necessarily money sitting in the bank. It needs to be collected from various sources as well.
Good, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next item under new business is item 5B, referral from Finance and Administration. Counselor Wild?
I'm going to get back to where I headed.
Sorry about the delay. I was shuffling papers and lost track of the right one. As a referral from the Finance Committee, I make a motion that we accept the contract award for tax-exempt revenue obligation bond, the interest rate for the RFP, and the council resolution authorizing the sale of the revenue obligation bond in the amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. This is being...
Counselor Schroes?
I'm going to abstain from this vote and remove myself from chambers.
We had several different bids from several different banks, and the one that we looked at and ultimately approved was from Camden National Bank with an interest rate of 2.47% over a seven-year period. There was, however, a lower interest rate, but it was for a five-year bond, which would have significantly raised the amount of money that we were paying back on a yearly basis, which we felt would be an undue burden on the sewer ratepayers in the town of Hamden.
We have a...
That was a long motion with a comment on the end, but I can redo the motion much shorter.
Nope, we'll take it as a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any public comments? Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Seeing none? Thank you. The next item is item 5C, council referral of opposed amendments to the fees ordinance to public hearing on May 15th. Some of these fees are from sections one, two, and five out of the fees ordinance. If people are interested, they can look that up on the town's website and see what those are. Do I have a motion to send that to public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we send the proposed amendments to the fees ordinance to public hearing to be held on May 15th of 2017.
Second.
Any public comment? Discussion? Counselor Wild?
I was going to say, you see, I can make a short motion.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Next item is 5D, is a referral from Finance and Administration. Counselor Wild?
I make a motion that we approve the authorization for the expenditure of two hundred and seventy-seven dollars out of the Recreation Reserve Account, account number 3-767-00, for the purpose of paying for the Bangor Daily News advertising for the pool site design engineering and permitting RFP.
Second.
Public comments? Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item under new business is 5E, another referral from Finance and Administration. Counselor Wild?
I make a motion for the authorization for the expenditure of two hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-one cents out of the municipal building reserve account, account number 3-702-00, for the purpose of paying Hamden Electric for the light-in repairs.
Second.
Any public comments? Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. The next item under new business is item F, another referral from Finance and Administration. Counselor Wild?
I swear, it's not that I like spending money, but I make a motion for the authorization for the expenditure of one thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifteen cents out of the IT reserve account, 3-711-00, for the purpose of purchasing three Windows tablet computers for the fire department and the ambulance.
Second.
Public comments? Discussion?
This sounds like a larger... This sounds like a larger amount of money, and I do believe, firmly believe, that this is a necessary update for our fire department and our ambulance personnel.
Counselor Marble?
I was just going to say for the general public that the discussion during Finance showed that this is on the cycle of replacing old laptops, as well as being in response to a state mandate for the format of tablets in order to file reports. So, it's not just an independent expenditure.
Thank you.
And just from a level of response and performance standard, what this will allow is that the fire trucks equipped with this technology will be able to pull up on their laptop actual building plans of buildings that they're going to fight the fire. So, it really is a tremendous benefit in terms of their ability to protect lives and property.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. The next item is item G, Town Manager Jennings.
We had a town employee recently diagnosed with a medical diagnosis that will require a limited amount of time away from work for testing and treatment. Time off will be provided in accordance with the Family Medical Leave Act. In order to secure a temporary part-time worker to ensure staff coverage of key functions of the position during the remainder of the fiscal year, I would request council authorization of up to $1,325 from the Personnel Reserve Fund to cover these personnel expenses.
I make a motion that we authorize for the expenditure of $1,325 from the Personnel Reserve Account, account number 3-733-00, for the purpose of offsetting costs associated with payroll expenses.
Second.
Any public comments? Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the liquor license renewal for McLaughlin's at the Marina. Do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we accept the liquor license renewal for McLaughlin's at the Marina.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The next item tonight is the item I, Manager's Presentation of the Proposed FY18 Municipal Budget. This time, we'll take a two-minute recess so we can get set up, and then we'll be back for the presentation.
Just in case. Oh, there we go. Maybe.
Okay, welcome back to the town council meeting. This time, the town manager will present the proposed FY18 budget for the town of Hampden. Town Manager Jennings.
All right. Thank you very much. And before I get into the brief PowerPoint presentation, I'm just going to illustrate for the council what you have in front of you. This is a hard copy binder of the budget, and this was in response to suggestions from counselors following on last year's process that having a physical binder would be helpful. So, this is actually going to affect how we're going to go about the process over the course of the next roughly six weeks of the budget process. So, as we get into the different working meetings, you can expect that we have, if we have new information, that's additional backup for some of these topics. We'll provide it to you in three-hole punch form. So, please bring your binders to every working session. We'll continue to fill that with new information, as well as there are recommendations that come out of different work sessions to either increase or reduce certain expenses or revenues, or as certain variables come into play, such as, just for example, the main local road assistance program, where we won't know until June what those revenues actually are, those kinds of things. As we get that new information, you'll note that on the top of each page, it has "May 1st, 2017, Version 1." So, that way, if we get to a Version 2, everyone will get that, and we will always be clear that we're all looking at the same information. So, I think that this will be helpful. And for those who don't have a hard copy binder, all of this information has not yet been posted, but it will be posted first thing tomorrow morning to the town of Hampden website, which is HampdenMaine.gov/budget. So, getting back to the binder, you have, last year, I presented a single budget that included general fund, sewer fund, and the capital program. What we've done this year is to present three separate documents, because they really do stand alone. So, you have your sewer, proposed sewer budget, which includes the proposed sewer capital program. So, only those infrastructure items that would be paid out of ratepayers rather than taxation. Then, in the front page of your binder, you have the list of budget working meetings. The council, back in, I believe, February, perhaps early March, had approved this list. So, we have posted this. It's actually been posted going back probably six weeks or more, and we're going to continue to just really promote to the public the many working sessions coming up. And I'll make this point again at the end of the presentation, but I know I speak for the council when I say that public participation in this process is strongly encouraged. And the working sessions are not this type of format. They're much more informal. We'll be sitting around a table, and I think if people show up and want to engage in the process, they'll find that you can certainly have a voice. Then, the next page is you've got, kind of at a glance, a summary of the entire general fund budget, and then you've got tabs breaking down for each department or each cost category. You have the FY16 budgeted number, FY16 actual, FY17 budgeted, FY17 year-to-date. And then you've got, the next column is the percentage. And at the time that we ran these numbers, it was April 25th, which was exactly 81.9% through the fiscal year. So, under those percentages, you'll see that some are highlighted or shaded. That's just a formula that automatically shades any number that is more than 81.9%. So, if your expenses are trending over, or if your revenues are even better, trending over projections, that's what that indicator is, with that highlighted box. Then, you've got the next column, FY18 Town Manager. That's my recommended budget amount. That's got the two bars on either side, and the change from FY17 to 18 in dollar figures. If it's a regular number, that's an increase. If it's a number in parentheses, that's a proposed decrease. So, now that we've got that out of the way, I will give kind of an overview and set the table for the meetings to come in the next weeks. So, I'm going to start just with longer-term budget and financial trends, speak to the budget process that's happened so far to date. I already gave an overview. You've got proposed expense budget, projected revenue budget. You've got a sewer budget, and you've got a five-year capital program, and we've batched that together with the proposed reserve allocation, so that the proposed reserve funding is directly informed by the capital program. We did that last year, but I think this year you'll find it's brought together a little bit more succinctly. And budget work sessions begin this Wednesday at 7:00 PM. And I should say that all of these elements of the budget are direct from the town charter. So, some of the budget changes from prior years, we heard about this a bit with the audit presented earlier tonight, but over the course of the last many years, it had become annual draw from fund balance in order to reduce the amount that needed to be raised by taxation. In fact, in the 10 years prior to FY17, the town drew just over $4 million over 10 years from fund balance. You see some of those numbers there for the last six years. The current FY17 budget did not rely on any draw from unassigned balance or from reserves in order to meet the revenue targets. The current year budget did also incorporate items that were previously paid from one-time revenues, namely, the Host Community Benefit Fund. We incorporated those into the expense budget. So, what we have in this current year that we're living right now is an accurate budget of what the costs are. That included also things like stormwater management, which has become a pretty significant expense, as well as some items that are not big dollar items, but which had not been specifically budgeted, such as Veterans Day and Christmas light decorations. The FY17 budget did include some one-time revenues, namely, the Environmental Trust. Overall budget trends, a greater percentage of the property tax dollar has gone toward the school and the county over the last eight or nine years. The municipal percentage of property tax revenue has steadily decreased, though it did increase in FY17. So, from FY09 to FY17, the town's budget went up over those, in the aggregate, over those eight budget cycles by 3.4%. At the same time, the RSU budget went up by 25.6%. Looking at the RSU budget that's proposed for FY18, that's obviously a major ingredient of our budget, and we just got those numbers for the first time this past Tuesday, so just six days ago. So, it's been a bit of a scramble to rejigger some of our numbers based on what we heard. But there is a proposed, the gross budget increase proposed by RSU22 is 2.54%. However, because of the sources of funding and because of projected reduced state revenue, state aid to education, that would fall much more heavily on Hampden. Specifically, it would be about 4.1% increase on the Hampden share of that overall budget. So, I took a look at the 10 cost centers, which by statute is how the RSU budget has to be broken down. What you can see here in the bar chart is the proposed FY18 budget for RSU22. What you see in the line graph that overlays that is the percentage change from FY17 to FY18. So, just to take one example, system administration represents a relatively small share of the overall school budget, but is proposed to increase by 10.8% from FY17 to 18. Now, some of this, I believe, is a result of RSU board trying to budget more like we had asked them to do a year ago, of actually budgeting where the expenses are, rather than so-called contingency budgeting. So, while some of these changes may appear significant, I think, without digging really deep, because we just got this last Tuesday, but I do think this is actually a good faith effort on their part to budget more clearly on where the expenses are going. With that said, of course, we will continue to dig into those details, and the next meeting of the RSU Budget and Finance Committee is tomorrow night at 6:00 at Hampden Academy, and I'll be there for that. So, the approved budget in FY17, this breaks down, shows pretty clearly where the costs go. Public Works is the largest, followed by police, fire, administration, non-department utilities, which is things like the water district primarily, as well as streetlight electricity comes out of there. Then, we get into reserves, solid waste, debt service, and then we get more into some of the departments, planning, assessing, library, pool, buildings and grounds, and so forth. The top costs in the town budget, leaving aside, obviously, school and county, roughly 65% of the budget's tied up in compensation. That's salaries, wages, health insurance, retirement, Medicare, workers' comp, group insurance, life insurance, and dental. So, that's fully just about 2/3 of the budget. Utilities and fuel are the second-largest expense. I've included in that the hydrant rental, which is what we pay to the water district, fuel, electricity, telephone, internet, water, and sewer. Reserve funds and debt service have been about 5% apiece, solid waste 4%, and everything else comprised about 16%. Now, this does not factor in offsetting fees or revenues. This is just on the expense side. So, due to last year fiscal '16 spending being somewhat below budget, and in some cases, revenues being above budget, most notably excise tax, which you excise tax, which exceeded projections in FY16 by over $300,000, the unassigned fund balance did increase in the FY16 audit, as we heard earlier tonight. Now, I will say they gave a percentage of 8.6%. My math comes to 8.8%. I assume that they're correct on that, and I'll figure out what, what I did wrong. But the point is, it was down to 7.4% and now it's back to 8.6%. So we're, we're heading in the right direction there. So this, I already kind of spoke to this, but this is what you'll see in your budget workbook. And I just wanted to illustrate. So you've got the line item, you've got a brief description of what that covers. In some cases, and this just happens to be the municipal building one as an example, in some cases, we've put the actual amounts. For instance, if we have a contract for service and we know exactly what it's going to be, we actually put that in. So we know we're keeping things as lean as possible. In other cases, it's, it's more general, depending on the nature of the expense. And I already walked through, but now that people have it in front of you, you've got FY16 budget, FY16 actual, FY17 budget, FY17 year-to-date, the percentage year-to-date, and those that are in excess of where we were on the calendar are shaded in pink or orange. You've got what I'm recommending in this year, and then the change. And I have added a note section. So for example, for electricity and fuel, I still have not locked in prices for next year. I'm still looking at options on that. So I've put that in red, just so it's very clear as you're reviewing that, that number could change. Other numbers could change too, but where I know something is going to change, I've tried to make that obvious. So where we are in the process, we had the goal setting back in February. March and April, department heads provided their budgets to me, and I've been trying to pull all that together, as well as obviously county and school. Tonight is the kind of formal kickoff of the budget consideration. And throughout the month of May, we've got six different budget working meetings scheduled. The council reserves the right to schedule additional meetings, but we know there will be at least six. And those are broken down by category. May 15th, the council did refer the fee ordinance to public hearing, so they will take a close look at sewer rates on May 15th. And on June 5th, that's the anticipated date that the council would refer their own budget to public hearing. What you have before you is my budget, that's your budget. So by that point, you need to get this to where, you know, there's hopefully a strong majority, if not unanimous, that would consider referring a budget. And June 19th is the date of the anticipated budget public hearing. And by the way, under the town charter, it cannot be any later than that. Some changes from prior years, the sewer budget includes proposed revenues and costs. But as I said earlier, the capital program, I've built it right into the sewer budget to keep that as fully segregated as possible. The sewer fund was self-supporting this fiscal year for the first time in probably 15 years. But that, that was based on a roughly seven-year payback of the inter-fund transfers. So that's one of the issues the council will look at at the rate hearing. There have also been new capital obligations taken on in the sewer since that budget was approved last June. And one additional change from prior years is, I mentioned about the host community benefit account, are budgeted in this budget as they were in the current FY17. One significant change that you see is we've gone away from this enterprise or quasi-enterprise budgeting for recreation and pool. They are both proposed with standard budgeting. What that means is that the expense side of the budget is going to be significantly more than what you saw last year. But it also brings the projected rec and pool revenues onto the revenue side of the budget. So you just need to flip back and forth pages if you want to get to, you know, kind of a true cost for those programs. Whereas last year, that was all done internally, and neither the expenses nor the revenues were reported in the budget presentation. They were reported to this council, they were considered in public hearing, and they were voted. But they were literally a separate document. So now it's all woven in together. There are some proposed staffing changes in what you have before you. We currently have an administrative position that has split 75-25% between public works and administration. I'm proposing to change that 100% to public works. I feel our public works department really needs a dedicated full-time administrative support. That does rely on my office taking over both payroll and ambulance billing and collections. I'm continuing to work with job descriptions and see how that can shake out. But, but the concept, that's what's before you. DPW is proposing a town engineer, the position title he's used as assistant director, as well as dedicated sewer personnel. There is a proposal before you to restore a third full-time position to the recreation department. This position has not been filled since the fall of 2015. And finally, Chief Rogers has brought forward proposed addition of one firefighter and one police officer. He's, he and I have met and talked this over in detail. He's given a very, very articulate basis for this, similar to what he presented at the goal setting back in February. Those positions are not reflected in what you have before you. So if either or both of those positions are added, it would change what you have in front of you. I felt that it's a, really, all of these are big decisions that ultimately are the council's decision. But for those two in particular, there's a fair amount of complexity. I've also asked Chief Rogers to go back to the, to recalculate some numbers in overtime, because in either or both of these instances, I believe adding a new full-time person would result in reduced payment of overtime, where for instance, we have a dedicated police officer paid in overtime for all but the summer months. So, so he's taken a closer look at those overtime budgeted numbers.
As far as ambulance billing and collections.
Sure.
Could that be done by someone in, in Chief Rogers' department? They have an administrative person there, correct?
He's got just one administrative person for police, fire, and ambulance. So I think it's, it would be a tall order. Tammy Ewing, our, you know, finance and HR, she did ambulance billing when she started early on. And she tells me she thinks we can absorb it within the current staffing, and it won't be a huge lift. Obviously, between now and the vote of the budget in, you know, about six weeks, I need to firm up those details. But I, I kind of think we can do it. On payroll, we have looked at outsourcing that. We've also looked at keeping that in-house, and I'm still weighing those options. So that'll continue to tighten up.
Thank you.
Some factors affecting FY18 costs, I am budgeting for a 12% increase in healthcare costs. This is, it's kind of a moving target, but when you look at the year-to-date spending on health insurance, last year, we expected a 10% increase would take effect as of January 1st. So understanding that would apply to half of the fiscal year, we budgeted a 5% increase in health insurance. When you look at where we are spending year-to-date, we're on track to overspend in health insurance. So I think I slightly under-budgeted what I should have last year on health. So partly to make up for that, I'm proposing a more significant increase. In the materials we've received, they've estimated between 10% and 15% based on the plan that we offer. Again, that would take effect January 1st of 2018. So it is, it's, you know, there is kind of an educated guess involved to come up with your best possible estimate. But, but that's what you have in there, is a .12 addition to this year's budget. We're budgeting a 3% increase in our property and casualty insurance and dental. The town share of RSU22 is proposed to increase 4.1%. County tax is already set, that's going to increase by 5.3%. As I mentioned earlier, I have not locked in pricing for heating oil, propane, and diesel. I'm still evaluating the best options, as well as looking at electricity rates. One of the operational factors for FY18, the change from PERC to MRC for handling our solid waste. There are some kind of back office things we need to think about. I have proposed $10,000 in contingency budgeting in case the facility is not up and running on time. We're aiming for April 1st of 2018. That leaves April, May, June, the fourth quarter of FY18 as potentially in play. What I've done is propose $10,000, which is about what we think that trucking costs could be. That's, we, I think that's a worst-case scenario. And what I've done is propose that to go into the solid waste reserve fund. That way, if we need it, it's there, subject to council approval. If we don't need it, it remains in that reserve fund for other solid waste reasons. That way, it's not an increase in the operating budget. We are going to lose the PERC rebates for the fourth quarter of FY18. However, we have a pretty firm number from MRC of what we will receive. It's going to be about $53,000. So we'll lose about $12,000 year over year on that. But this third point is a pretty important one, and you'll hear more about this on Wednesday at Planning and Development Committee. We have to enforce the solid waste flow control ordinance. This has been on the books for decades. As a practical matter, has not been enforced for a long time. So the ordinance has to be updated, and it is going to require some new administrative tasks. And I'm, I'm still trying to figure out where that will rest, whether that'll be my job, Public Works' job, Paula's job. It's got to be someone's job. So we're looking at that. Some cost factors on the sewer. I mentioned earlier, we've got the debt service for, that's got to be built into the expense side. Potential need for additional borrowing regarding the Gris Mill Bridge. That's the replacement. And the town's, the sewer fund's going to be responsible for replacing the Forest Main and Water Main in that bridge. We do have a public hearing on May 15th. Some changes in state policy. Municipal revenue sharing, I'm pleased to report, is projected to increase by about $16,000 from last year to this, or I should say, from this year to next. It's still less than half of what it was just seven or eight years ago. So we're still well below what it had been for 50 years prior to that. So the legislature is still rating municipal revenue sharing, but at least it's going up this year, not down. There are changes to the Homestead Act that were adopted a couple of years ago. This will increase the exemption from $15,000 to $20,000, but it will also increase the state reimbursement from 50% to 62.5%. So I'm working with the assessor to determine, or to estimate, the Hampden impact. There are additional revenues proposed in this budget. I am projecting the use of environmental trust revenues to offset budgeted stormwater management expenses. There's an expense line in the stormwater count of about $74,000. This would be subject to approval of the Environmental Trust Committee and this council. So they, their next meeting is on May 18th. I'll be talking with them about this proposal and see if they feel that should remain in there. But I think it makes a lot of sense, given that the Environmental Trust income is eligible for purposes that improve our town's environment, which stormwater management is all about that. We are fortunate to have one-time revenues available in the Mayo Road bond. And so we are able to plug in $109,000 onto the revenue side. I've got our new tax collector Barbara doing some kind of deep auditing of why. But I will tell you, our auditor has been, this has been on the books for four or five years. They told me and Tammy about it last fall. And I said, she said, "Oh, you've got $109,000. You can spend this." I said, "We're, we're really not in a spending mode, but thank you." I now understand that it's actually sitting there, needs to be spent. And so what we think happened, and actually, maybe someone knows, is, is they estimated the Mayo Road expense here. The actual cost came in somewhat less. So even after they had done the whole project, paid all of the bills, there is money that was borrowed that's sitting in the bank. So that $109,000, and I confirmed three different ways with the auditor, we can use that to pay the debt service on that Mayo Road bond next year. It won't be there for FY19, but for next year, it gives us a welcome piece of revenue. I am projecting an increase in excise taxes of about $110,000. I am proposing the use of limited reserve funds to offset budgeted expenses. That's, you remember from the goal setting, we have a number of accounts with some balances which can be put to use. Every dollar we spend out of those existing reserve funds is a dollar that does not need to be raised otherwise. And I am proposing a fund balance appropriation, which, this is something that's, you know, I'm kind of going back and forth on. But what you have before you is carrying $200,000 of fund balance. That may or may not survive the process, but, but it's in there now. Estimated mill rate impact, it is way too soon to say. We don't know what the budget's going to end up on either expense or revenue side. The mill rate will not be established until the tax commitment, which will be in August. And it's certain that the budget proposed tonight will change as a result of several council budget work sessions in May. We also expect greater clarity as the RSU22 budget process moves forward, and in particular, projections of state aid to education. They have projected what I believe is a conservative state aid to education. At a meeting we had earlier this year with Senator Cushing and Senator Thibodeau, Senator Thibodeau said four different times, state aid to education in FY18 will not go down from FY17. With that said, he said, "This is what I believe. This is not what I know." So RSU is budgeting a smaller amount of state aid. If the state ends up meeting his commitment, and that additional revenue comes in, depending on how that board manages that revenue, that could be used to reduce the local commitment to education. And those who were at last week's meeting, and there were actually three counselors there, know that the board voted a resolution which gives them three different options if they get more revenue from the state, the third being to reduce the local commitment. One of the points that I, and I know my counterpart in Newburgh will make tomorrow night, is that if they get more state aid to education, they should amend that resolution they voted last week to say with clarity, that would be used to reduce the local commitment. So that's something that I know the council would join me in advocating that.
We were in a situation, I think probably three years ago, where they got extra aid, or we overpaid, and we didn't see a dime of it. So I think a resolution stating that it's coming back, or will be used to offset, would be a good one.
We actually went so far as to estimate the amount of increase in valuation that would be needed in order to absorb the projected budget increase from RSU22. And holding all things equal, which you saw earlier in the presentation, they're not. We are seeing increased costs in a number of areas. If you held everything equal, with the RSU budget going up as proposed, the Town of Hampden's valuation would have to increase by just over $14 million from FY17 to FY18, just to absorb that increase at the current mill rate. So at that proposed increase, you know, there really is no choice but to either cut services or raise taxes. So I made that point very clear to the school board, budget, and finance committees last Tuesday. I think they heard me, and we'll see what they do tomorrow night. A few words about the continuing impact of the sewer. As we said last budget cycle, this is not a problem that goes away in one year. This is the net income, or in this case, loss, before contributions and transfers from FY04 to FY15. And basically see that the sewer was running in the red for, you know, 12 years. I know when the auditor was here earlier tonight at the finance committee, he said it's not unusual in their experience to see water and sewer funds running behind. I think if we had asked him to elaborate on that, he would acknowledge that the extent to which the Hampden sewer has been not properly funded is an outlier, and it's a problem. And it's going to be a problem for this town for, for probably five to seven years to come, to some extent. Due to other funds, this is the year-end balances that the sewer fund owed to other funds. This is whether it's the general fund or the reserve fund. We ended FY15 at 541.666. I didn't update this for '16, but it went up by 110,000 in FY16. So it stands at about 651.666. And that's about where I expect it to end FY17. Part of the problem with sewer billing is the, one of the major expenses is the treatment charges to the city of Bangor. And what you see here is the And what you see here is the volume of flow is the blue bars. So this is for FY10 through FY16. You've got seven complete years of data. What's blue is what they are recording at the city line in terms of the volumes coming from Hamden. That is what the basis of our invoices is. What you see in the red bars is when you total up all of the volume that we are billing our customers. So what you can see, and then the green line is the actual percentage. So to take 2010 on the far left, what that says is that the volume we billed for was just 45.5% of what we were billed for. You can see it ranges wildly over those seven years, and in 2013, we billed for 68%, and it was closer to 63% in 2016. What's going on here, and the council knows this, but this is inflow and infiltration, or I&amp;I. It's something we talk about a lot at the infrastructure committee. It's water that's getting into our sewer system that is not coming out of, you know, a household. It's coming out of groundwater, it's coming out of, you know, old or leaky pipes. It could be coming out of illegal, you know, roof drains that are tied into the sewer. All of that volume is going to the city of Bangor. It's part of what we get billed for, but we can't bill anyone for it. So the unfortunate consequence of this is that the ratepayer, until we fix this problem, is paying for more than they're actually generating. Now, this is certainly not unique to Hamden. In fact, this is part of every single sewer system in this country. To what degree is it a problem? And it's a pretty significant problem here in Hamden, so we're very focused on it. We've got our engineers at work looking at the meter pit at the city line to make sure it's measuring things properly. We also have a grant underway that we'll be submitting before June 2nd to update our CSO master plan, combined sewer overflow master plan, and a major part of that is identifying inflow and infiltration. The main way to do that is the CCTV, closed-circuit TV of the sewer. That's about a $300,000 expense to CCTV the entire system. We're getting about $60,000 worth of work done this spring, so that's a pretty good start on it. But as we move forward, we're going to CCTV the whole system. We will know where the inflow and infiltration is coming from, and then we can fix it. And it really, that is the highest priority that the sewer faces, in my view.
Is that some of that's from storm drains on roadside, or where does that leak out to, or go out to?
Storm drains just go into overflow and end up in the river.
In the river, okay, thank you.
So the, because of that fluctuation, and so when you look at, say, 2013 and 2016, I think those are probably drier years in terms of, you know, less rain, less groundwater, less inflow and infiltration. So that plays out in what we're charged monthly by Bangor for those treatment costs. You can see this is just all over the board with a low of 52, or actually, a low of $3,300 a month, and as high as $36,000 a month, order of magnitude difference. It's been very, very difficult to accurately budget for what that expense is going to be. So what you have in front of you, I've calculated an average monthly invoice of $13,584 over the last three years. So that is what the treatment charge is based on in the proposed sewer budget. As you'll see in the budget document, you can see that first year was on the high end of the spectrum. If you condense that and say, "Okay, let's just take the last two years of average bill", that change alone would take $22,000 out of the sewer expense budget. As I say in there, you take some chances because we don't obviously control the weather, and next year, who knows what will happen, and maybe we'll be billed 32,000 or 36,000 a month. But the point is, I've spelled out for you kind of what your options are, and it's kind of interesting. It's not like budgeting for electricity or fuel. It's really nothing like that. Summary points, getting to the bottom of the wide range of flows, top priority, it's underway. Regardless of the findings, we know that I&amp;I is a significant problem. We are pursuing grant funds. Addressing the problem is going to continue to rely on sound financial management of the sewer. We also need to start devoting some dedicated resources towards sewer operations and maintenance, as well as having the manpower to go after those grant opportunities. So in conclusion, tonight is the formal kickoff of the budget process. Council will conduct at least six budget work sessions in May, in addition to the sewer rate public hearing. We strongly encourage public involvement. All of the materials that you've heard tonight will be posted first thing tomorrow at hamdenmain.gov/budget, and of course, you can stop by at any time and just ask us what's going on.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
What about annual increases for employees, town employees?
That's something that we'll look at. It's something that has not been an automatic thing, so what I can do is I can spell out what it would cost to do a cost of living, and then look to the council for direction on that.
Is this on?
Green light on.
Okay. I want to be heard this time. Good evening. I'm Jeremy W. Jones, Esquire, a landed gentleman of the Partridge Road. The current town budget season has begun. Know this: every tax dollar you spend was earned by most through hard work and life sacrifice. Only a very few may be truly fortunate enough to view this as mere chump change. Some with limited resources, fewer opportunities, or fixed incomes will be pushed closer to the edge and giving up. We, the people, are being squeezed by higher tax rent on our own homes and property within the town of Hamden. I urge you to make these your budget goals. These were plagiarized from a favorite counselor and edited by me. One, be fiscally responsible. Two, protect the taxpayer. Three, maintain the financial solvency of the town. Four, maintain the community. Five, make sure the bills are paid. And six, don't add any more unnecessary bills. We need to take an honest, straightforward, open, and transparent look at our spending habits. We are taxed enough already. We must control our spending. It is high time we implemented a zero-based budget for this round. No more automatic 2% or 3% spending increases. Every labor hour, every expense, every receipt needs to be fully justified, analyzed with extreme prejudice, and documented. Oh, but wouldn't it be nice if... Stop right there. Learn to separate the true needs from the I-wants. Start now. Be very careful how you spend other people's money. Remember, the whole town is watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Yep, just come right up here to the mic.
Just you showed that interest on the $250,000 loan for fiscal year 2018 was $40,000?
Or was that total debt service? Okay.
Any other comments? Anything else from the council? Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda tonight is committee reports. Finance Administration, Councilor Wild.
I'll make this brief. I'll make this as brief as possible. We did vote on everything we discussed in the finance committee during the council with the expenditures out of the, mostly the reserve accounts. We did have a larger discussion during finance this evening with our accountant and the audit, which was very interesting, surprisingly. And that pretty much wraps it up. You heard it all here at the council.
Thank you. Services, Councilor Marble.
The next services committee meeting is next Monday, May 8th, and we'll be discussing priorities for fiscal 18 and beginning budget work on the bus.
Thank you. Planning and Development, Councilor McPike.
Planning and Development met Wednesday, the 19th. We discussed the ongoing discussion of the market study that we had. We also discussed a grant opportunity, a waterfront grant opportunity, and at that time, we decided that the effort that needed to be put in, and the results of that were, we decided as a committee not to pursue that. And the last thing we did is we had a report and talked about the planning board ordinance committee, and that's it.
Thank you. Infrastructure, Councilor Seroyz.
We had an infrastructure meeting on Monday, I'm sorry, yeah, two weeks ago, and a number of things were discussed. First of all, streetlight petition for Chickadee Lane, which was referred on to planning and development. Also, old business proposed scope and budget from Drummond Environmental and Soil Matrix for annual post-closure monitoring for the Pine Tree landfill. The motion was passed 6-0. We also got an update on estimated sewer costs associated with Main DOT replacement of the Gris Mill Bridge, and discussion of potential CSO master plan update. And we also talked about, we've got an update on correspondence with the postmaster regarding mailbox locations and mailbox damage during snow plowing on the Mayo Road. Discussion with the postmaster, we did not get approval to move it on to the other side of the road, so they will remain where they are. Discussion around real-term energy proposal regarding LD light, streetlight conversion, that has been moved, pushed for one year for us to handle other priorities that we have within the town. Proposed memorandum of agreement for MRC and Fiber Right for potential town contribution towards the Colbrook Road infrastructure cost for $167,000, which will be going to public water to the Colbrook Road. Also, an update on LD 881, an act to increase wastewater management responsibilities by licensing certain municipality sewage collection systems. The town of Hamden's testimonial in a public hearing on March 23rd. We also discussed a summary of potential impact, Hamden resulting from DOP impact area defined rules and procedures by which Main's DOT will set boundaries around urban compact areas as defined in 23 MRSA. Invitation for Hamden to attend the March 29th meeting of Bangor Council Chairman and others regarding the option of solar on municipal properties and the purchase and power and purchase agreement. And Councilor McPike attended in representing the town. Crest Municipal Building Reserve Fund for $1,200 for an elevator test, which was approved. Also, public staff comments, staff update on posting part-time public work position, which moved forward, and also an update on state and federal grants, a number of them, including the Northern Border District Commission Economic Infrastructure Development Investment Grant, State of Maine Department of Agriculture Conservation and Forestry, which is a submerged land program, harbor management and access grant, and also the State of Maine Agriculture Conservative and Forestry Coastal Communities Grant Program, and finally, the State of Maine Department of Agriculture Conservation and Forestry Boat Facility Funding. And that will be all.
Thank you. The next item is the Town Managers Report. Town Manager Jennings.
I don't have anything to add, other than to let people know that the first budget work session is this Wednesday at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda tonight is Councilor Comments. Councilor Seroyz.
No comment.
Councilor McPike.
No comment.
Councilor Wild.
No comment.
Councilor Cormier.
No comment.
Councilor Marble.
No comment.
Councilor McAvoy.
I'm going to go out on a limb and say, "Spring has sprung." You know, it's here, you know. Otherwise, remind everybody to shop local and buy American. Good night, Hamden.
And I have no comment tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Duckett?
Sure.
And good night, Hamden.